All right, I'd like to call to order our November 26, 2020, 2024 meeting, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have our roll call. Michelle, do the roll, please.
Yes, Huel.
Here.
Maderas.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Petway, here. Granlund.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have our mission statement. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We get to start our meeting this, uh, tonight with two Highlander highlights. We have, if I could welcome up to the table Jake Henderson, who want to come up, and Hector, if you'd like to come up. We have, um, our Highlander highlights for our, uh, girls' soccer assistant coach, Victor Alvarez, and our senior Danny Silva Blanco. Turn it over to you guys. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for having us, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. Thank you all. I'm excited just to present a couple of people up here. I'll speak maybe on Victor. You could also do that too, probably, a little bit, but, yeah, that's true. But then I'll invite, uh, our coach, uh, our head coach Hector to speak on John Anderson. So anyways, I'm really excited to be here to honor specifically Victor here tonight. I think this is your second year coaching with us now for both, uh, our, both our girls' high school soccer teams. From day one, Victor's been committed to just improving and getting better as a coach, seeking out opportunities to get better, which has been really great. Additionally, you have just poured your heart and your time into the girls and, uh, creating relationships with them, but then, uh, on top of that, just making sure that they're getting better on and off the field. So that's been really great. And then for me, like, my favorite part is just, he's got an infectious smile. He's so excited to always be here, and he's just an asset to our community. So, uh, really excited for Victor as he was awarded the Class AA State, State Assistant Coach of the Year. So congratulations, Victor. Um, and then I'll turn it over to, uh, Coach Hector to say a few words about Danny.
Um, pues quiero decir gracias por tenerme aquí. Con ustedes. I just want to say thank you for having me here with you guys. Es un honor poder hablar de usted otra vez, uh, en una oportunidad así. It's great being able to talk about Danny again in a situation like this. Viniste a nosotros con todo potencia, entonces solo estoy, me alegra que encontrases una casa en un equipo que pudistes jugar bien. He already came in as a powerhouse day one, so I wish I could say we had anything to do with training him in, but I'm just glad he found a home to play with and to enjoy his time with. Creo que tú eres un ejemplo de lo que es Columbia Heights, y él decide que muchos caras de diferentes lugares vienen, y si les das la habilidad de correr, ahí está la pista. I think you're a prime example of the people that walk through heights, um, different faces, different backgrounds, and if you give them the green light to go, they'll go as far as they can get. Um, so it's been great to see you thrive in that realm. Este fue, tú eres, este premio era para el mejor jugador como todos, entre uno de los mejores jugadores de todo el estado. Entonces no sé cómo decirte, si no crees que es un buen jugador, puedes creer. This award is quite literally the best soccer players in Class 2A in the state of Minnesota. So if there's any doubt that you're a good player, you can probably shed that now. Aunque tuvimos otros jugadores que han tocado la meta, lo que te distingo a ti es que tú solo tuvieses un año de poderes, la historia, y lo hicistes muy bien. Thing that distinguishes you between other players that we've had, um, in the program is that you actually only had one year to get your history book because that's how long you were able to play, and you made an impact in that one year. Y lo otro que te distingo es que aunque tuvimos jugadores jugar en ese juego, nunca tuvimos uno que era el MVP. Y eso sí fue algo, uh, uh, orgulloso de ver que podemos ser uno de los mejores entre todo el estado. The one thing that does also separate you in that game is that he got MVP from the actual All-Star game for his team. He both opened the goal, the scoring of the entire game, which was incredible and a banger, but when the coach, uh, was down to the last 10 minutes and had looked at his bench of All-Stars that he didn't really know, he looked at Danny and said, "You're, you're the difference maker," and he did. He snatched the ball, set up the assist, and they scored the goal to make it 3-2. La diferencia contigo también cuando el entrenador tuvo todo un equipo, una banca de estrellas, te miró a ti y dijo que tú eres el, el que hace la diferencia. Y si lo hicistes, garases el balón, uh, asisteces la asistencia, y eso ya fue después de hacer el golazo, el bombazo que hicistes en la primera mitad. So, I'm glad that Columbia Heights was your home and that you're Highlander. I hope, uh, I'm glad that you got to be the pinnacle of our soccer program and that, more importantly, again, you found somewhere to call home and hope to come back to one day. Me alegra que tú pudistes ser el premio y el mejor de lo que es nuestro programa, y espero que más importante encontrases una casa, uh, un lugar a donde llamar casa, y ojalá un día regreses a tu comunidad.
Congratulations, y'all. Do y'all want to say anything?
Yo lo transludo si quieres.
Buenas noches, solamente quiero agradecer a los entrenadores, a Dios y a mis padres por estar siempre ahí.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Uh, first, I just want to say thanks to the coaches, to my parents, and to God for being here with you, with you guys.
Tal vez solamente duró un año, pero fue una carrera increíble. Al poder estar aquí, agradezco a todos ustedes por darme la oportunidad de jugar para Columbia Heights.
It might have only been one year, uh, that we got to play, uh, together, but I'm thankful for the opportunities and, uh, to play on this team with you guys.
Espero en algún momento ver los campeones y aún queda un Danny Jr.
I hope to see you guys be champions, and just so you know, there's a Danny Jr., a little brother. Thanks.
Well, for me, um, thank you so much for, um, Jake. Jake, all time is support. It's a big support for me and with Sydney, with Sydney Carriello. It's not for Jake and Sydney. That is not happening today. Thank you so much, Jake. Appreciate your support all time. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Well, uh, uh, big congratulations to Victor as the, um, Assistant Coach of the Year. What, what an honor for you, but what an honor for us and for our players to have a mentor like you for them. So, thank you very much. Congratulations to you for that. And to Danny, um, again, what a huge honor. Um, All-State Team. That doesn't happen a lot in Heights. So, we're glad to see how hard you worked and you represented us well, and we wish you all the best and hope you come back and, and help teach and mentor, uh, some of our current players. Congratulations. I have certificates for you, so we're going to have you come up. You also get to shake the hands of all of us, so we'll all line up for that, so.
We're going to line up for you.
Literally at my right hand, so it was a partner speech.
I'll do one at a time so you do a photo of, so I'm going to do Danny first. Do you want to come up closer?
Thank you so much. That one is, is really important for me, my family. I'm very proud of that.
You are all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you are also more than welcome to leave as well.
Que nuestra junta es muy interesante, pero no se tienen, no se sienten que tienen que quedar para la, para la reunión. Se pueden ir, no, no se sienten que tienen obligados a quedarse. Ya se pueden ir. Gracias. Sí, a regresar a trabajar. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. I'm just going to have a permagrant now the rest of the night, I think. That's awesome.
It's precious.
Yeah, I love that. Um, next we have, we're going to have to get back to business now. Next, we have our agenda approval adjustments and announcements. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Jessica, in a second.
Second.
I didn't, I didn't hear you.
Michelle, uh, so first, uh, motion by Jessica, second by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. On November 27th, 28th, and 29th, there is no school. On November 28th and 29th, the district is closed. On December 10th, at 4:45, we have our Subcommittee on Policy in the Superintendent Conference Room. On December 10th, at 5 o'clock, is a Subcommittee on Community Engagement in the Community Room. And December 10th, at 6:00 PM, is a regular School Board Meeting in the Community Room. And then on January 7th, at 6:00 PM, is the Organizational Meeting. Next, we have our communication to the board. Um, at this time, any, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. I'm assuming since there is nobody left in the audience, that there's nobody here unless any of the directors wanted to come up at this time.
Is there somebody online?
Yeah, no, they have to be here, I think. All right, um, so moving on. Excuse me, we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like to remove anything from our consent agenda?
I would. I'd like to remove the new suspended deleted courses.
Okay, and so the new suspended deleted courses will be voted on immediately following the consent agenda. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the Personnel Report, the policy first reading of policy 416, drug alcohol cannabis testing, 416 forms, 418 drug-free workplace, drug-free school, 419 tobacco products, 506 student discipline, 515 protection and privacy of pupil records, and 532 use of peace officers and crisis teams, and the minutes from the November 12th meeting and the November 19th work session. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Laura, in second.
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay, next, I need a motion. Um, so what we'll do is we'll have a motion, um, and then we'll do a discussion. I get a motion to approve the new suspended deleted courses for 2025, 2026.
So moved.
Julie, in a second.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Julie.
Okay, so I just have a couple of questions, and I'm glad Director Tuckrell is here, um, to hopefully answer a couple of questions. I did miss the board meeting where I was not able to have that discussion. So, all of these courses, the question I have is have the books and such been identified yet for these courses? And maybe.
Sure, yeah, come on them.
Thank you.
And before Director Tuckrell answers that question, I, no, don't, no, that's totally fine. This is good to have discussion. And I know that you'll, you'll provide information further, but with the governance piece with this, we approve the, the, the course. And then from there, the course is approved, then materials are, are identified from, from there, but do you want to give more detail on that?
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. Yes, thank you for your question. We have worked for quite a while, last year included, as we came to the board, and shared that the ELA Department, the English Language Arts Department, has worked with the Regional Center of Excellence, which is part of Bright Works, which connects with the Department of Education. So all of the work around the courses, in terms of what's within them, falls within the standards. And so currently, we're approving the courses, and then our next step would be working with them again to look at materials to support.
Okay, so does this go through the World's Best Workforce Group, um, that approve curriculum or reviews curriculum?
Yes, we did go through last year and shared about the ELA courses that would be coming up or the work that we are doing. We do share with them. It's not technically a curriculum when they're usually doing book clubs or other pieces. So we do share the materials and offer that. We also offer our families the opportunity to look at the syllabi prior to the course and with that. So we would share that with families ahead of time, what text would be within the courses, and we always have alternatives if something is of question.
That's perfect. Um, so, one of the courses that came up was this Exploring Identity Through Literature, and I've had some comments about, is this going to include sexual identity versus, you know, other, you know, culture and other types of identity? Does that include that?
Within the standards, it does talk about identity and that identity is made up of a lot of different pieces. It doesn't specify exact which ones needs to be included, but within the standards, all of it is included when we think about identity.
Okay, and then when it comes to, um, families who might object to materials, we have, um, op, opportunity to use other materials. How are parents informed of the materials their cho, their child would choose?
Great question. Within the syllabi that the high school provides for families, it lists a text that will be used, a core text. Many times, if choices are there, students have choice, and we don't, it's not a core text that everybody needs to read, but if it's a core text, it would be included in the syllabi that would be provided to families.
Okay, and then if families do not want their child to choose this class, you know, as an elective, and there are no other options, is there an opt-out for them?
Great question. That's a benefit of the courses tonight that we're approving, is that our, um, students get to choose from a whole plethora of courses that are being approved this school year and looking to approve more in the future. So it is by choice that they're choosing the course.
Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Great. Any other discussion or questions? All right, well, hearing none, hold on. Oh, yes.
Thank you so much for coming up and, and talking about this. Um, so just as a reminder for me, is it true, my understanding is that we follow the state standards that are in place for our English Language Arts. Is that correct?
Yes, I have them right in front of me. Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the, new and suspended deleted courses for 25, 2025, 2026 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to our discussion reports and information items, starting with reports from members of the board. And let's start with Jessica. I think you've got at least one thing to report, right?
I do. Can you believe what it's going to be? Can anyone guess? Yes, I will report out on Highland Turkey Bingo because I made everyone sit through all of my incessant promotion. But it was a very successful event. We had great turnout at Highland for their Turkey Bingo event. Superintendent Stenbik was able to attend, as well as Director Petway, so it was great to see you both there. And they had a successful event and raised a lot of funds for, for the school there. So glad that, um, the community was able to participate in that. I also attended the pre-delegate assembly meeting, um, because we have delegate assembly coming up. I'm looking at, uh, Director Palmer over there. We're excited to attend that and represent, um, our district at delegate assembly, uh, next weekend. And then I did attend the work session, um, like many of you last week, and I also stopped by, uh, a night of conferences at Columbia Academy. So that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Julie.
I also attended the work session, and I also, um, reviewed expenses for the month of July and, or August and September. And, um, I had a meeting with, um, Superintendent Stenbik, just as a report for, um, my review of expenses. Really glad to say that I never come across anything that's unusual or, or in a concern. So those months are closed for me, and, um, that was it.
Thank you. Laura.
I actually don't have a whole lot to report. Um, I did have, uh, I did attend the work session along with everybody else, and, um, I had conversations with, um, several, um, several board members. That's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michelle.
Yeah, um, I attended Turkey Bingo, which was a lot of fun. I, I told both of you that I would only stay for an hour, and I stayed the entire time, so that is how much fun it was. And I attended the work session last week. We also held a BIPOC Family Advisory Committee meeting at North Park, um, this, this past week, and it was, it's getting darker faster. Our meetings are at 5:30, so it was really like pitch black, and it was snowing for like, the first time really, snowing. And so kind of a, um, a lighter group, but it was a lot of fun, um, being able to, um, talk individually to families. So that was, that was a good night. And I also attended the city council meeting last night. Just gave an update, um, a couple things. Promoted Shrek, which is coming in December, and, um, yeah, that's all I have. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Mary.
Well, um, I have not very much to report this week. I did attend the robotics meet, um, at Columbia Academy, and it was the most people that I've ever seen attend because we actually have space for them, so that's really exciting. And it included people who don't have somebody, um, in their family that it, that is in robotics, so that was really nice to see community members in there. And a lot of people have asked about how do they get involved to, to volunteer, so I'm directing them to, uh, Coach Orcutt on that. Unfortunately, I did not make the work session last week because I was ill. I'm glad to be here tonight. Other than that, I had the chair meeting prior to this and, uh, phone calls with members Petway and Maderas, and conversations with students, staff, and families. So, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Um, for me, I, uh, last week had a chair meeting prior to the work session, also attended the work session, and I have to call out Member Palmer. Thank you again for your world famous lasagna, which, I mean, our work sessions are fun anyway, but that just makes it more fun when you get world famous lasagna, and for everybody who contributed to Potluck, thank you for that. I attended the chair meeting prior to this. Um, I also had a conversation with Member Huell, Member Huel, conversations with Superintendent Stenbik, and a conversation with, um, Member Palmer. Next, um, so thank you all. Um, next, uh, we have our superintendent's report and correspondence, Superintendent Stenbik.
Thank you. Um, Director Tuckrell and I met with the Columbia Heights Library Foundation to provide them with a progress update on their generous grant that they gave, gave to us. Part of the program funds were used to provide new books for our summer reading program, and the funds were also used to sup, to provide supplemental reading, um, materials aligned to our new literacy curriculum in grades three through five. So very grateful for the Library Foundation and that continued partnership. A district team participated in the second of four sessions at the University of Minnesota for the principal support series. So really looking at how district office and principals are collaborating to have the most impact for our students. Congratulations to the Highland community. Turkey Bingo was really impressive, so well-run, just a lot of fun, too. And I, I did get two things in the silent auction, so I was happy about that. A reminder to board members that with the holiday, there will be no Friday. Update in your email this Friday. Okay? And today, I got to help serve lunch at Highland Elementary School. So just, we have such a caring food service department, um, and I really appreciate all they do to ensure that our children are all well-fed. So what a great kitchen, what a great space to be in, and the children were wonderful.
Was it breakfast for lunch?
It was breakfast for lunch. The kids loved the mini pancakes.
Can I ask a question, too? Were you serving lunch because we were short on staff or because it was something that you chose to do for a fun day?
So, um, during the pandemic days, many of us at the district center would be deployed out to help in different buildings. And since that time, Teresa Hernandez, who runs the kitchen at Highland, once a year at least invites Director Bennett, who served last week, and myself to just go and help out. Yeah, they were not short-staffed. It was just, I mean, it was really a special event for us, right?
I love that. Thank you. Of course, I know that you would if we were short-staffed. All right, thank you very much. Um, next, we have our World's Best Workforce, CACR, and Strategic Plan. And we have Director Tuckrell and Assistant Superintendent Niambwe.
And I'll be chiming in from here.
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm here this evening with Assistant Superintendent Niambwe and Superintendent Stenbik to share about our summary of last school year, 2023, 2024, our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and really focusing in on all of the core values this evening, as we reflect on last school year. Our core values in Columbia Heights are aligned with our Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education Equity Statement.
So the governance for this item has already taken place. Back on June 25th of 2024, the board approved the new strategic plan. And so this evening, we're here to present on, um, just a summary report of last year as we transition into the new plan.
The Department of Education provided us World's Best Workforce in 2013 to support school districts with enhancing student achievement through teaching and learning supports. The four goals are listed below for World's Best Workforce, and from there, school districts work with our World's Best Workforce Committee to determine SMART goals on each of those for each of the years. So really focusing in our goals on all children are ready for school, all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed, all students are ready for career in college, and all students graduate from high school. So our World's Best Workforce Committee presented these goals last school year, and we were excited to see that we met in two of the goals, Goals One and Three, around all students ready for school, as well as increasing the number of students taking college-level courses. We did not meet in Goal Two, um, we met in many parts of it, but did not meet it fully. And in Goal Four, about increasing graduation rate or keeping, maintaining it, we do not have the data yet as the graduation rate for FY '24 for the last school year doesn't come out until February. So we were on track, um, the last few years, so we're hoping that we're also on track for that one.
Part of the World's Best Workforce is also the achievement and integration. And the purpose of the achievement and integration for the Minnesota program is to pursue racial, economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, economic background in Minneapolis, in Minnesota public schools. And we have three goals for the Achievement and Integration Program. Number one is to increase the college and career readiness for Hispanic students from 42%, participating in early college classes to 51% in 2026, in order to achieve the overall demographic of the district. Last year, we met this goal. Second goal is to maintain Columbia Heights Public Schools Second goal is to maintain Columbia Heights Public Schools students access to teachers that are trained in culturally relevant and effective instruction at 100% for three years by strengthening equity themes by participating in professional development. I am happy to report that that goal was also met. And then the final goal is to increase the number of students participating in integrated learning environment for both Columbia Heights Public Schools and San Antonio New Brighton. And we measure that goal by looking at the participation rate of students. And our participation rate was 93%, so that goal was that goal was also met.
This evening, we provided a quick summary of those two, but there's a lot more details on each of them, including the strategies behind them and more data. And that can be found on the Columbia Heights Public Schools website. There's a full report. We also provide it through the update, as well as we had a public meeting in October. And we also provide it through different committees throughout the year. And as shared earlier by Chair Mueller, it has changed from World's Best Workforce. And she mentioned CACR, which is Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness. So in 2024, the legislation passed moving from World's Best Workforce to C A C R. And through that, you'll notice the same four goals, but a fifth one added in. So starting this school year, our goal of preparing students to be lifelong learners. So our World's Best Workforce Committee will create a SMART goal around that and share that with the board.
So both the C A C R and Achievement and Integration and World's Best Workforce, all of those, we are directed to have all of those tie into our strategic plan. And we really do feel that under our umbrella priority areas of all belong, all succeed, and creating worlds of opportunity together, that they really are well aligned. So with our new strategic plan, moving forward for this school year, presenting next year, we there's just a screenshot here of the strategic plan website that's on our website. This will be populated for this year's data because we have all new metrics. It'll be populated sometime in August or early September of 2025. So for this evening, what we're going to do is take a look back at last school year. And this is really part of our transition year from our previous strategic plan metrics and looking ahead to our new three priority areas. So let's take a look back. So under the first priority area of all belong.
You might recognize this data as it was presented in the spring as well. We provide our students with a survey, and we actually have started to do it twice a year. Our administration and teachers have said that they wanted at the beginning of the year and also at the end of the year so that they can look at improvements in areas to support their focus in their schools. So our student survey from 2024 really showed above 80% that students feel like staff care about them and that they feel safe at school. We also saw an increase in most areas in students feeling good about themselves. And students who express their feelings appropriately very often or almost always.
So one of the metrics that we're looking at measuring for in the area of all belong is we really feel like one way to measure a sense of belonging is participation. And so for next for this current school year, we've designed different ways of collecting data. And this just shows some of the data limitations that we had for looking at next school year or last school year. So with the the data that we do have for participation in activities and athletics, you'll see that we have almost a 50/50 breakdown between male and female students participating in activities and athletics. And here you can see the racial and ethnic back breakdown of participation in activities and athletics. And again, this is in middle school and high school participation rates.
I think we take great pride in our school district in terms of student relationship and the support that they receive from the adults. And here we have some examples of a few of those support. We do partner with outside partner. Lee Carlson is one of our partners who provide mental health support and well-being for our students. We also have social worker in our schools who provide daily small groups, as well as one-on-one meeting with students. And then we conduct risk assessments to ensure that we have the quality data to be able to serve our students and mitigate those needs. We also are proud to have homeschool liaison who are constantly working with our teachers and our families to be an intermediate, whether it's communication or inviting families into the schools and providing them some professional development to become well-rounded with what we do in school. And then we train our teachers in responsive classroom at the elementary level so that they can engage with fidelity and treat our students with respect in a humane way. And we also provide a curriculum like Fly Five to have teacher at their hands to guide their instruction as well as move mindfully. And then at Columbia Academy, we have STAR, which is an opportunity for teachers to meet with students to receive extra help five days during the week. And then finally, we have Mental Health Week at Columbia Heights High School. In terms of family relationship, this is information that you've seen before. But when we look at the data for 2024 and compare it to the previous year, we see that in all categories, we've we've gone up. My favorite, I think, it's the one that says teachers provide useful feedback to support learning. And so you can see that at their high school, it's 90% and Columbia Academy, 93%. And as you go backward, the numbers tend to go higher. Why? I couldn't tell you why, but it's the great work of our teachers that they're doing. Along that same continuum, families do speak and appreciate the support that the schools are offering. And in particular, we see that adults help students to think about how to handle difficult situations. And then the data similar to, I mean, at each category, we've gone up compared to the previous years. I think when we look at other school districts, we always ask the question, what are we offering? And I think in our district, we're offering a plethora of opportunity for students to enjoy that sense of belonging. At the elementary level in particular, around the arts and athletics, there is family fun events that I know many of you board members have already reported tonight. There is also multicultural events and opportunities that they have. And I think my favorite is the music, the boy. He seems to be quiet, but I think when he plays that instrument, it's wonderful. At the secondary level, we also have offerings. So that continuation from elementary to secondary is also visible in our offering with respect to what students can enjoy. And I think we see more athletic at the secondary level and we see more celebration. We heard about the robotics and there are many of those fun activities that students get to say they belong to Columbia Heights because they can participate in after-school activities.
So as part of all belong, we look at student relationships, staff relationships, and family relationships. So this is really looking at opportunities for staff to be engaged in terms of providing leadership across the district. There are many different committees that staff participate in and lend their ideas and perspectives to. We also meet regularly with the head, the department, the heads of the different unions, both licensed unions and non-licensed unions on a regular basis. Really making wanting to make sure that we're taking care of our staff. We offer a few different or a couple of different programs for this. One is the Employee Assistant Program, and I think that's pretty standard across most districts. One thing that we started implementing new last year and are continuing this year is a program where we've contracted with a licensed therapist for staff to access. Staff can access this licensed therapist, not having to go through their insurance process, not having to wait months and months for appointments. And they can, it's very convenient. It can be in person or via Zoom. And the feedback that we're getting is very positive. And it's a very well-utilized program for for staff to check in with a licensed therapist.
We are also fortunate to have two affinity groups in our district. And the groups meet throughout the year and they support each other. And they also provide ideas to the district or provide guidance or feedback. And both affinity groups are supported by the Department of Education through support by resources as well as funding. And so that's been a great support in terms of our district to ensure everyone feels like they belong.
Last year, one of our metrics that we were able to conduct was a staff staff taking a survey in January as part of the strategic plan. We did only have 27% participation, but we intend to bolster that participation rate. And as you can see, the different breakdowns of staff job categories, the majority of that 27% were teachers responding. So that gives a little bit of context for the next slide, the metrics on the next slide, when it comes to employee satisfaction. So there you can see the different breakdowns in terms of strongly agree in blue, agree, disagree, and then strongly disagree in green. So these are all different metrics that we that we look at and take into consideration as we're planning for the future and connecting with our staff.
As we move from all belong to all succeed, you can see from this slide, we look at a lot of data. We really focus in on the data. What is the data telling us? What story are we seeing from the data? So some pieces from the data that we saw, including our AP, we had over 350, we had 353 students take, 353 exams taken by our students last school year by 242 students. So some students took three or four exams. They were in here for hours. It was amazing. The next area in terms of proficiency, we know is an area of growth for us. So the proficiency data here, we have taken out students who are EL levels one and two, so newer to the country, learning English, as well as our students who receive support for cognitive disabilities. So with that taken out, our proficiency is listed. And this is an area of focus for us this school year, is to really grow in proficiency and growth. Fastbridge is an assessment that we use in the district. And we give it three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring to students in kindergarten through 10th grade. And this is the data that our teachers and our admin and all of us are using quite a bit because we're able to narrow it down where the MCA is a state assessment given one time a year and we don't receive the data until summertime. So Fastbridge really has been the support in terms of providing more instructional strategies as well as intervention or support to push students ahead. And then our SAT proficiency, also without our students who are one or two, are listed there, too. One of our benchmarks or one of our goals from our World's Best Workforce was really increasing the number of students taking college-level courses. We know the impact it has on students as they go into college or go into careers, but also the financial impact that it can have. And so our goal was to raise it by 5%, but we can see here that we raised it by over 11%. And that was really the teachers at the high school pushing students into the courses as well as increase in the number of courses we have. And here's a long list of the different AP class offerings from last school year that were provided or students had a choice of, as well as our Enoka Ramsey Community College and Century College Early College courses where students earn college credits for that. Columbia Academy also offers an honors track, which leads into many of these courses. A whole list of our career and technical education courses. It's amazing the things that our students are doing in there. And then we're fortunate to have it at the middle school. We have a career and technical education pathway as well with Project Lead the Way. And we have four different courses that rotate from robotics to green architecture to flight and space. Another big area of all succeed is really supporting our staff with professional development. So we have four district in-service days, and this was shared with the board earlier last school year. Our focus of the days is on educational equity. And when we think about educational equity, we really focused in on literacy last year. So we had 193 staff, including our school board sitting in front of us, participate in the Hill Center Science of Reading course to really support our staff with the science of reading. How do students learn how to read and how can we support them better? We also, as mentioned earlier by Superintendent Stenvick, we have a lot of leadership committees. One of them that we have in our district that really does impact our goals and the strategies that we have is our Teaching and Learning Leadership Meeting, which includes administrators and teacher representatives from all the schools and programs and many of the directors. And we focus in on head, heart, hands. What is the knowledge that we need to have? How do we support our staff with that? The heart part, what are the relationships we're building? How do we support the connection with our families and the partnership? How do we support each other through PLCs, professional learning communities? And then the hands is really the hands-on. What are we noticing? What are we seeing in the classrooms? What are the teachers seeing in terms of instruction? How do we support that knowledge that we know? How do we bring that into action? So the different areas we focus in on, we look a lot of data. We make a lot of changes as needed, look at resources that are needed. We support each other on that. It's almost like a PLC together to determine areas that we could focus in on. And a lot of that looking at it as a Fastbridge testing. And in all of our schools, we really take the time to focus on each and every student to make sure that every student is growing. And if not, what can we change? What supports can we give? We focus in on supporting students to get one year plus of growth because we know that would help students push them ahead and close any prior gaps of knowledge that there might be.
And regarding the data, we know that in our school district, we've grown the number of English language learners. And so before us, we have a slide that's giving us some data about the annual access score, which is the assessment that our English language learners take to measure their proficiency in English. And so we've broken the data by school, looking at the composite score. And you can see that from one year to the next, every school has improved. The way proficiency is measured from access is that you need to score for, you need to have a score of 4.5 in three of the four, I mean, 4.5 in all four domains. But if you have three with a 3.5, then we have to look at some other measures to access. Why 4.5 is to exit you. We teach students with the hope that they're learning the language, that they're becoming proficient, and they can access the content at a great level. The second slide is looking specifically at each of the four domain that are measured by the access test, which is listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And I want to draw your attention to the speaking part. In particular, when you look at that second part, you see that Highland is one of the school that has reached that almost that 3.0 in terms of scoring. And when we looked at the data, we asked ourselves the question, what was happening? Because we're very interested. And what we found out that the teachers at Highland were teaching students how to speak continuously, using filler word and really demonstrating what it is that good speakers do. And so we've adopted those same strategies and shared them with all the EL teachers, including other teachers in the district. And we are asking, as a district, we've set a goal to develop oral language development so that we can increase the fluency of our students. It's important to note that the research, there is research out there that suggests that EL students speaks on average for 90 seconds per day. And so our goal is that in Columbia, they can speak for more than that. So continuing with family engagement, our schools communicate effectively with families to ensure that they have information. And so Columbia Heights High School, Columbia Academy, and Highland send weekly family newsletters to families. And then elementary teachers also send regular communication through Seesaw. At the secondary level, the communication is sent via parent view. And then throughout the district, Columbia Public School, there are updates that are sent weekly to families, staff, and secondary students. In addition, the community connection is sent to household in the district three times a year. More data to substantiate what families are saying or their perception about school. Again, like the previous data that we've shared, in 2024, we saw a lot of increase. And my favorite on this slide is communication is easily accessible by school programs. And families are reporting with high percentages that they are able to access that information from school. And on this next slide, we're looking at the family engagement and communication. The difference here is pretty striking, right? Parent satisfaction about communication within the district. You can look at the blue and the red, which is strongly agree and agree in a vast majority. Our families are favoring the way we communicate with them.
So this slide is a list of So this slide is a list of opportunities for staff to, for staff engagement and communication. These are various committees where staff members, parents, oftentimes students, and community members come together to make decisions and suggestions or recommendations in those various areas. So lots of different different opportunities for talking about student wellness, communications, community education, our district finance committee, lots of different opportunities there. And our survey data that went to staff, asking about how effective is the information you receive from your school, district, and site, and you can see the breakdown there. So again, as Director Tuckrell mentioned, we look at a lot of data, different types of data. Lastly, when we think about creating worlds of opportunity together, we look outside of our of our doors and outside of the four walls of our classroom to our local community. So we invite community members in to our various committees, and we spend time connecting with local organizations, with our very active local organizations such as Rotary, Kiwanis, the Business Council, multiple faith-based organizations, different departments in the city of Columbia Heights. We also host every year annual resource fairs and which bring in about 40 different community organizations to provide resources to our families, college and career fairs, and then different formal business partnerships that directly support our schools and our students. And you can see some of them listed there, Medtronics, Junior Achievement, Ecolab, the German Chamber of Commerce, General Mills. And then with our local representatives, senators and representatives, we have school visits, regular communication, and as you know, annually, they present to the school board. So with that, that is our 2023-24 summary report of the strategic plan.
Thank you. Any questions? Michelle?
So I guess, looking at the chart, so there was a, there was a staff belonging chart, and then there was the student, the family engagement and communication chart. They were a little different. And so I guess I'm wondering for this year or for next time, have we gone deeper into like, I don't know, why staff may feel a little less supported to try to figure out what we could do next for them? Or have you gotten suggestions from people on, you know, what would help them feel or change that scale a little bit for us?
Sure, I can respond to that. Yes, absolutely. And I think we provided the context there of the date and the number of staff that responded. So we were able to disaggregate that data and then meet with different groups. For the current school year, a lot of the metrics are changing, and we're just really excited about the different, the 29 different metrics for the new strategic plan. And so we will have, you know, we've recreated and tweaked in different survey questions and different connections. So, yes.
Awesome. Thanks. Thank you guys for all the information. It's really great.
Mary?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I know it's a very long one, and I know it took a long time for you to put it together. So thank you very much for that. I think, I have a couple of questions, but the first thing is just a statement. Looking at the access testing, I think it's really remarkable how consistent it is across our district. And I am guessing it's probably not like that in other districts. So I think it it shows that the support continues all the way through from pre-K to post-graduation in some cases. So kudos to everybody who worked really hard on supporting our students for that. Looking at the World's Best Workforce data, the one goal that was to decrease reading proficiency by, or I'm sorry, yes, the gap by 5%. Do we have any guesses as to why that wasn't, we weren't able to make that? Or I don't know, I know that we, that Superintendent Stenvik just asked or made a statement about how this is new measurement. And so I'm just curious if, you know, what what played into that possibly? And if we have any ideas?
Great question. We are digging into the data. We have it broken down by demographic. We saw growth in some of the different demographics and not others. So at the school level, they really break it down by student. And they figure out what's going on with a student, what supports are needed. And this school year, we're excited for a lot of the things that are happening where teachers are focusing in on a small group of students to see big growth. And so we're hoping to see a change in that this school year as we dig in deeper with that.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then just one more question. With regards to family communication, I know that there's a goal to have weekly communication at all levels, knowing that our admin staff are incredibly busy and that it takes time to write newsletters. Do we have any support? Or how do we support our admin to be able to meet that goal? Or do we?
Yep. So actually, Director Niambue and I conduct regular walk and talks with the admin. And as part of those, we do more than walking and talking. We also sit and look at goals and different checklist areas. And so that's, those are some things that we're that we're checking in on. One thing that we're excited about is uniformity using the Smore tool, which provides translatability in multiple languages. So as long as a family sets the language once, the information will come that way. So we're pushing, trying to push that tool out more so that more people have access to that. But these are regular ongoing conversations about increasing our, you know, clear and effective communication out to, you know, community members, families, students, and whatnot. Since you brought it up, I will just note that recently, actually Director Tuckrell and I were in a meeting, and there was a conversation about one of the communications that had gone out through our regular district communication. And one of the staff members said, oh, that always goes to my spam. So sometimes there are those Smore, that Smore tool that we use is going to spam. And so Director Stunkel and I actually had a conversation this week about some strategies that we can push out to make sure that people know that to look for it perhaps in their spam folder, that these communications are going out.
Thank you for that. I just want to say, you know, Mr. Burkes sets a really high bar to the point that again, like I say, I have friends who have children not in the district, and they're like, oh, is it Mr. Burkes's call? So, you know, he's got a following outside of our district as well. So thank you very much for that information, and thank you.
Julie?
I just have a question on the all belong family relationships. We increased beautifully where the students felt physically safe and the teachers felt supported. I was looking at that physically safe, it went from like 78% in early childhood to 100%. I mean, we we improved significantly. What was the difference that happened from 23 to 24 that gave us those kind of percentage increases? Does anybody?
I can't speak for Director Stunkel because she'll probably be able to break it down a little more. But a lot of it had to do with we're thinking about post-COVID and being back in person and feeling that sense of safety and togetherness again. We noticed that in a lot of our data. But I don't know the exacts in terms of the early childhood, what they figured out for that.
Any other questions? Jessica?
Not really a question, but just a couple of comments. I just, I want to thank you for the time you took to put together, to identify and put together some measurables that kind of makes sense in an overview format to kind of help us bridge from the previous strategic plan to the new strategic plan. I think for anybody watching, this is a lot of information. And just to underscore that this is not the first time we as a board are seeing each of these data points, that we have opportunities for discussion and questions and governance on all of these pieces throughout the year, and that this is really kind of an overview of that data within the framework we have of the new strategic plan before we move to all of those new metrics. And so I am very excited to see some of the ways in which we're planning to communicate out about our new metrics and progress on the strategic plan. I think having that webpage that's almost like a dashboard is really giving a lot of transparency to all of the data points, but then also how that universe of data works together, like how all of those pieces are integrated when we're really looking at continuous improvement in all of these areas. So around academic measurements, around, you know, measurements, metrics around belongingness, building relationships with our community. All of those, we know all of those pieces are interconnected, right? And that interconnectivity is what advances student success. So I'm just very excited to see us continue to move towards that under the new plan. And I really just wanted to to provide some context for people who might see this for the first time and see all these data points and be like, ah, that's an awful lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura?
I really like how this was all put together. I mean, we've, we've done this before. I've been through a number of these. And and we have data here, but we also have the context, too. And I like those extra layers that maybe we weren't seeing before, although we'd seen it at one time, seeing it all in one place, I think is, it just shows the the amount of work that goes into it because all of these pieces work into this one, into this one specific point. And I'm hoping that we can integrate that into the next year when we actually have the actual new data with the new, the new metrics and everything and kind of keep maybe some of that because it feels, it feels really good. It feels full. It's not just, you know, a little pie chart up there, you got a little arrow, and, you know, we're good. You know, or the one, two, three, four, five, yes, we meet it, no, we don't. You know, this feels a little bit more concept, you know, real. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time at our work session last week on this and tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, we will move on to the Columbia Academy roof bid with Director Hennigens.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. Just give me a minute to end this presentation. And get into the next one here. Somehow it disappeared from life for me. I know I had it here. All right, here we go. Share my screen. Now we're cooking. Okay. Columbia Academy Roof Bid. So the, some of this will just be a quick review. You've seen this presentation when we, when I asked for authorization to post bids. But our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values of community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation aligning with the CHPS Board of Education Equity Statement. So this evening, this is not a governance item, it's just information. This will come back December 12th, regular school board meeting fraction item. So previously, I presented when we went out, or I asked for authorization to post bid, that we had three sections of roof at Columbia Academy that upon further testing, were showing large wet areas within the insulation that showed that they needed attention more immediately, and we couldn't hold off on those sections any longer. And the big question is, is when we put those out for bid, what would that look like? The square footage is a little bit bigger than what we've done in recent years at Valley View last year and, or this past summer, and Valley View, or Highland, and then Valley View. And so these are the bid results. So McPhillips Brothers Roofing was the low bidder at $987,000. It's a little bit higher than what we anticipated, but not a significant increase by, based on what we anticipated. And as you can see, the bidding was fairly tight. And there was six bidders, half of which we worked with before. And McPhillips was the one that won the bid at Highland Elementary. So we feel very confident in them. And then we have a recommendation from Garland Roofing Company that we work with to go with the lowest responsible bidder, which is McPhillips Brothers Roofing, with a base bid of $987,000. Again, this is a long-term facility maintenance project, so it'll be funded through those long-term facility maintenance dollars. And this is just a repeat of the timeline. So this evening, information item, and December 10th, board, school board recommendation action. And then this would be a June, July, August 2025, wrapping up in August 2025 so that we can start the school year successfully. We don't have any other projects at Columbia Academy this coming summer that would be in the way. We will have to reach out to the solar company and and work on moving the solar panels and putting them back. We've done that before at North Park Elementary. So I feel confident that we can effectively do that, and it will stay within quest.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. I was just wondering about the number of bidders and if that was something like in the range of normal or what you were expecting? Or more than you were expecting?
What we were expecting. So, I mean, if, rarely have we put a bid out where we've had nine, 10, 11, 12 companies. If we only had two or three, I would, I'd be a little bit more concerned. Concerned what our timeline was for putting the bids out. Were we too late? But I think we're getting out at the right time. And having that six or seven, I think, is a really good amount. The consistency in the bidding makes me feel pretty good. And there wasn't a huge range. But so it's a pretty straightforward project. There's not a lot of rooftop units, a lot of things in the way. The roofing company doesn't have to worry about the solar, we'll be handling that. So I think that's why it was so consistent. So. But it'll be a little bit longer. It's a little bit more square footage, so it'll take them most of the summer. But again, there's nothing going on over there, so I'm not worried about it.
Thank you.
Is this a fiscal year '25 expense or fiscal year '26 or both?
Both. So it'll, it'll be, yeah, fiscal year '25 carrying into fiscal year '26. Most of the expense will come in fiscal year '26.
Thank you. Any other questions? We will see you back December 10th.
Yes.
Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the policy first reading. Policy 722 was up for annual review. So it's policy 722 public data requests, and there were no changes to this policy. So we have policy first reading. So that is available on our website if anybody would like to take a look at that and make any comments before approval. Any questions? All right. Next, we'll move on to action items. Our first action item is the educational assistant contract. So welcome back Director Hennigens and Director Bennett.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. We did meet over a month ago in a closed session to discuss the education assistant master agreement. Since then, we have come to a tentative agreement, and the union has ratified the contract. So some of the changes include, including building monitors into the contract, an increase to longevity, bereavement leave, which matches the other contracts for 284, an increase to the 403B match. A big change is we removed all the steps and have just one step for each job category, which will help with some of the differentials we had before in confusion and payment. So this will be your category is a special ed setting three, and it's one rate. Or homeschool liaison, just one rate. And then the mini adventure, adventure club, and pre-K for assistance, they remained as part of a memorandum of understanding. We were able to add some additional items, including 403B match, longevity, bereavement leave, and also
and also just having one step for each category. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of the contract.
Thank you. I realize as you're talking, I should have brought up my cover sheet, but. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the master agreement between Independent School District Number 13, Columbia Heights, and the Columbia Heights Education Assistant SEIU Local 284, covering the school years 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026 as presented?
So moved?
Mary, and a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you all. All right. Our next action item is our school board representatives. So as we all know, we had a number of really great applicants for our student school board representatives positions. We have two open positions and an alternate, and we had eight applicants. I think we had talked about during our work session that there wasn't one of those applicants that we wouldn't have selected. So they made it, they made it pretty hard on us. These were anonymous applications, so we even to this day do not know who, who these people are. So truly electing merit, we're electing them based on the merit of their, of their application. So at our work session, we had had conversations and discussed moving forward with applicant number three and applicant number six to serve on, and to serve as school board representatives. Applicant number four would be the alternate. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve applicants three and six as student school board representatives, and applicant four as the alternate. And a motion to move that forward.
Move it.
Michelle, and a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? I think, I think you guys are going to have really great student school board reps, so it's awesome. Chair Mueller? Yes. Can I provide a little bit of the timeline? So upon approval, this, Principal Winn and I will be contacting the students on Monday. So in school, so they'll be notified. And then once we receive their permission, their parent permission, then we'll be able to make the big announcement. So we're really excited for that. So we will contact the two that were chosen, the alternate, and then we'll also be contacting all of the applicants to, to let them know how great their applications were and encourage them to try again. Great. Thank you very much. Julie?
I'd just like to mention to anybody watching that we feel that these positions are very, very important for the students to learn. And we've, we're offering a letter for them to participate. So I just wanted that to be in the public.
Yeah, definitely. Great. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you all very much, and we're very excited to hear who our school board representatives are, who the mysterious applicant number three and number six and number four are. Next, we'll move on to board topics. Does anybody have a board topic? Mary?
Yes, thank you. I just want to remind people that we have our upcoming Truth and Taxation meeting here at my house. I know we received our preliminary tax increase-decrease from the county. And thank you again to the voters who pay, you know, who voted for this. And, you know, so we can continue to grow our students and support them in the ways that they need. I was very pleasantly surprised. My house price did increase. But when I pulled out the cost for what the school district was, we actually are paying less money than we had been historically. So I think that that's a really important thing for the voters to know too, that again, we're being really good stewards of the financials. And it's very possible that your house may, you know, you may benefit a little bit from a decrease, even though we've provided, it was voted in that we would have a lot more support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board topics? All right. Hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:15.